Welcome to Smith Vocational Agricultural High School. Regularly the Board of Trustees, today is Tuesday, September 17th. May I have a call for an order?
Mr. Tayling.
President.
Mr. Aquadro.
President.
Dr. Spencer Robinson.
Here.
Dr. Bonner.
Here.
Mayor Ciara.
Here.
May we all stand for a pleasure, please? Let's read this to the people of America. This is the Republic of which this stands. We are nation, we are power, we are individual, we are liberty and justice for all.
The mission of Smith Vocational and Agricultural High School is to prepare students for social responsibility, employment, and post-secondary education through rigorous, applied, technical, and academic programs.
Okay. Is there any participation by the public this evening? We're going to bring you up late. We're bringing up a minute.
Okay.
At this time, we have some official business to do. Andy?
Sure. So it is my pleasure to start this presentation by referring back to the looking back articles that are often found in the Gazette. And I would ask the board and anybody in the public, looking back on this date, September 17th, back in 2001, does anybody know what happened on this date in 2001?
Oh. Ms. Carver started working here.
That is correct. You get the gold star of Dr. Spencer Robinson. Twenty-three years ago today, Ms. Carver's...
Wow, that's poetic.
It is. Ms. Carver studied here at Smith Vocational, and this evening marks Ms. Carver's final Board of Trustees meeting. She will be celebrating with you this evening, Ms. Carver.
Yes, on behalf of myself and the leadership team and the faculty, and obviously on behalf
of the Board of Trustees, we really do thank Ms. Carver for the service. It's been an honor to work with you. And with that said, we do have the ceremonial clock to provide you, and I think there's some other presentations to also give you as well, so. I'll turn over to...
Yeah, we'll do the clock first. Ms. Carver.
It was a nice show.
Did we ever tell you that the Kevin didn't work?
This better be in the Friday mornings.
It's for dinner.
Yep, we did it, thank you.
We have some more.
Well, thank you all. You're beautiful. Yeah. Well, thank you very much.
You're an amazing resource. When I was the union president, you were just so helpful to me and understanding what I needed to know about people. Like kind and supportive, authoritative, informative, New Year's stuff.
And great. Not authoritarian, just authoritative. You knew what we were talking about.
And it has been such a pleasure to have worked with you in this other capacity and then having to listen to kind of pass like...
I'd like to...
I have to approve any pictures that are getting posted. I just want to see them. Leslie didn't hear that.
Okay.
At this time, we have a motion.
Send it to you on Saturday night, come on.
I had a chance to go to the three-county fair, and I want to commend everyone responsible for the absolutely beautiful despite in the Smith Oak Barn. I was especially impressed by how full the space was with so many impressive vehicles, as well as the high-interest displays for each shop. It was so easy to feel very proud of the school. I also caught the school bus demolition derby, and although our bus did win, it sure looked good and lasted a long time. You may remember that I'm a member of Vocational Technical Education Advisory Council to the Boards of Elementary and Secondary Education. I've been asked to share my experience as a parent and a school committee member with implementing the 2019 CTE admission regulation updates at the special board CTE admissions study section. That's only a lot, but essentially sharing my experience with the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education as they will be the implementation of policy by years end. I've already asked Dr. Lincoln Hookers how to prepare for this, and I invite anyone in our school community who wants to share their thoughts with me about this important issue, so please do so.
Excellent. Thank you. May you have a motion in a second to approve the minutes of July 23rd, 2024, Board of Trustees meeting?
So, second?
Any further discussion?
Excellent, as always.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. School's spotlight, you want to talk about that?
I'd just like to introduce our Spanish teacher, Aaron Mendelson, who's going to give a brief update to the board on what we offer in Spanish. So again, Aaron, how many years have you been here?
This is my eighth year here. I started in 2017.
When Aaron came here, there was no Spanish program, there was no foreign English program. And Aaron's really done amazing work over those eight years, building the curriculum, working with our vocational programs, and as you're going to see, talk about bi-literacy, the seal of bi-literacy during this presentation. So I can't thank you enough for your service and the assistance, and I'm sure the students are walking away when they graduate with skills that they never would have thought of 10 years ago. Aaron?
Okay, thanks. My name's Aaron Mendelson. I teach Spanish here at Smith. Like Dr. Lincoln Hooker just mentioned, I started the program here, so in 2017, it was the first year that students at Smith took Spanish on campus here, and we started with Spanish one. That's still like the main course that most students, you know, most of my classes are Spanish one, at least half of them are Spanish one. So we have Spanish one for 10th grade and 11th grade. We even have some seniors that opt to take Spanish one with the 10th graders, too. So we have Spanish one, now we have Spanish two at the school as well. Spanish two is generally for 11th and 12th graders, and we also have Spanish three. And finally, we have Heritage Spanish. Heritage Spanish is a course for students who speak Spanish at home. It's an opportunity for them to continue learning Spanish. And most importantly, it's an opportunity for them to develop their literacy skills in Spanish. So that's kind of like an overview of the courses that we offer here. And now I'm going to talk about some of the programs that we've been implementing slowly over the past couple of years. One of the biggest programs is the Seal of Bi-Literacy. The Seal of Bi-Literacy is a state program, and it's run through DESI, and we offer it here at the school. It may seem like it's kind of obvious what it is, but actually I think there's a lot of misconceptions about it. The Seal of Bi-Literacy is a stamp that goes on a student's diploma once they graduate. So nobody's earning the Seal of Bi-Literacy until they graduate. And it says that the student is bi- literate. That means they can read, write, speak, and comprehend in two languages at a certain level. So that doesn't mean that students are getting this just because they speak Spanish at home. Many students who speak Spanish at home still struggle with their literacy skills, and that's one of the points of the Heritage Spanish course, is to help them further develop their literacy. We've actually had a number of students who speak Spanish at home who come very close to getting the Seal of Bi-Literacy and don't get it because their writing ability or their reading ability is almost there but not quite. So that's one of the purposes of the Heritage Spanish course that we have here. I think it's pretty clear, it's pretty evident how this could be beneficial to students. You know, when you, kind of when you're going to apply for jobs, it's kind of like the gold standard showing employers that this person can command two languages instead of just saying, you know, "I'm bilingual" or something on your resume. Here's like the stamp from the state that says that you are. Additionally, it's a, it can be similar to like the AP exam where you could get college credits for it. I think UMass is now offering 12 college credits for the Seal of Bi-Literacy in languages. So that's significant. Not every college does, but more and more colleges are offering it. So it can be a real asset to students after they leave here. It's really, it's a very prestigious award, and it's not like we're handing out a lot of these. And a lot of, and it's the same in schools all over the state. And by the way, the Seal of Bi-Literacy, I think, has been adopted by most states in our country now. The threshold for where you're able to get the Seal of Bi-Literacy varies by state. It's very high in Massachusetts. So how do you get the Seal of Bi-Literacy? Well, students have to score a certain percentage on their MCAS, I forget exactly what it is. They have to score a certain, in their English Language Arts MCAS, they have to meet a certain score, and Mike Parks usually is the authority on that. He works with me on implementing the Seal of Bi-Literacy. So I don't worry about that part too much. Mike Parks could tell you, I can't. But as far as the Spanish content, students take a standardized test. And if we could, is that clicker around somewhere?
It's right there in front of the clock.
Oh, this one right here? What do we got here? Oh, okay. Is that the next one?
No, it wasn't. I'll be your clicker.
Oh, you got it, okay, all right. So students, students take a standardized test called the Apple Test. And the students need to reach, I'll just back up for a second here. All classes at Smith Vocational are based on proficiency, they're proficiency-oriented. So proficiency is like the level that you can perform in a language, okay? Most of our students in Spanish one, they're at this range right here, this is the novice level. Spanish one and two students are generally in this level right here. Spanish three students are kind of pushing towards intermediate a little bit. But a lot of our heritage students, or students who speak Spanish at home, they're up here towards the advanced level, certainly with their oral communication skills and their listening skills. But sometimes their reading skills are down here around intermediate, and some of their writing skills as well are down here in intermediate. A lot of these students, they've never really had any kind of like formal classes in Spanish before, especially if they're, if they didn't go to school in their place of, you know, where their parents are from, be it, you know, Puerto Rico or Mexico or where, you know, where have you. If they were raised here in this country, they likely haven't had any formal education in Spanish at all. Therefore, their reading and writing skills are kind of like, you know, still around intermediate, even though they might be very proficient oral communicators. And so the standardized test that students need to take in order to get the Seal of Bi-Literacy is called the Apple Test, and they have to score intermediate-high in reading, writing, speaking, and listening. We have a lot of students that end up scoring intermediate-high in listening, speaking, reading, but not quite making it in read and write, okay? So that's the Seal of Bi-Literacy in a nutshell, and there's another program that we're implementing too called the Bi-Literacy Pathways Program. This is another, well, I'll tell you about the Bi-Literacy Pathway Program. Other students in Spanish two and three are also taking the same standardized tests, not for the purpose of getting the Seal of Bi-Literacy, but there are, there is another system of language credentialing that we're able to do here at Smith Vocational whereby students get a certificate that they can put together with their other vocational certificates that say they meet some of these other ranges in language acquisition, okay? So that kind of certificate, although it's not a stamp on their diploma like the Seal of Bi-Literacy is, it is a certificate that they can show an employer and say, "You know what? I'm not like fluent in Spanish, but I have, I can perform some basic functions in Spanish." And I think that's valuable as an employee, you know, as a potential employee to your company or business. So that's another program that we have here. Last year, I think we had like 20-something students get certificates in the Bi-Literacy Pathways Program. And, you know, once you have a certificate, you could always get the higher one next year if you're in 11th grade. You could always work towards the higher one. And, you know, I think it's not difficult to see how a certificate and language can connect to the vision of a graduate and so on. We all know that Spanish language skills can be valuable in a lot of the professions and vocations that we offer here. So yeah, we'll just flip to the next slide briefly. This is a, this is a chart that shows the amount of time that it takes to reach some of these ranges. So again, to get the Seal of Bi-Literacy, that's like up here towards the upper end of the intermediate range. That takes a lot of time to attain. So that's for somebody who's taken Spanish consistently from like 3rd grade through 12th grade, you know, year-long courses for several years on end. They have the amount of time necessary to develop that level of proficiency where they could obtain the Seal of Bi-Literacy. That's why we don't have, at our school here, we just don't have that time, and so, you know, we don't have dozens of recipients of the Seal of Bi-Literacy here at the school. However, we do have a lot of students that can attain up in this range, up here. It's kind of a unique teaching environment for a lot of reasons, but as far as languages go, students are coming from all kinds of different middle schools. Some have had Spanish before, some haven't had Spanish before, some have had three or four years of Spanish before, and they're sitting next to kids that haven't had Spanish at all. So, you know, in the class, in my Spanish one and two classes, like we have a large range right in here of abilities, of proficiency levels. And, you know, grades nine through 10, taking Spanish all year long, you might get to like novice high. And we do have a lot of kids attaining that here, which you'll see in the next slide. This is, this is the Bi-Literacy Pathways Program that I was mentioning. This is for your lower levels, Spanish two and three are taking the same standardized tests and getting certificates in the Bi-Literacy Pathways Program. So we've had many of these that we've awarded. This is the novice high level. Now, students need to score novice high on all four domains, reading, writing, speaking, and listening. We've had a lot of these. Last year, we had a lot of these, probably a dozen of these. I don't have the numbers, probably should have added that in here, didn't do it, okay? We have a lot of, we have some intermediate-low Bi-Literacy attainment awards last year as well. And I think maybe one or two of these, we had one of these last year, and like I mentioned before, we have several students who came very close, they're in 11th grade, they're probably going to take the writing portion again so that they can try to get the Seal of Bi-Literacy before they graduate this year. And then we just have a couple more slides. This is like some data from that test that I was mentioning, the test that, everybody takes the same test, Spanish two, Spanish three, Heritage Spanish, they're all taking the same test. This is a traditional classroom, so this is Spanish one, two, and three. The dots represent the national average of all schools in the United States, all students that are taking this test. So this is on intermediate, this is interpretive listening and speaking, presentational writing, interpretive listening, interpretive reading, what these stand for. So we're a little below average for all students in the country on those levels. This is novice. The M means novice, the I means intermediate. And then the last slide, these are heritage learners, these are students who take Spanish up, who speak Spanish at home. Again, the yellow dot is the national average for heritage learners. So our heritage learners are slightly above average here. However, you'll notice for reading, an I-5 is the threshold for the Seal of Bi-Literacy in Massachusetts, it's lower in other states. A lot of students are not quite getting I-5s in the writing, so that's the main focus of the Heritage Spanish course. That's it, that's Spanish at Smith Vocational in a nutshell. You guys have any questions?
Aaron, I want to thank you very much. That's very important to our school and we support you 100%.
Thank you.
I have a question. You worked with a colleague in another part of the state last year, can you tell us a little bit about that?
Yeah, yeah. Last year, a colleague of mine from another vocational school, Nesho Vitek, invited me to be part of a grant that she applied for. It was a grant from DESI, the Office of Language Acquisition at DESI offered this grant. And one of the purposes was to have vocational schools collaborate about their language programs. So we had five vocational schools in the collaboration. Smith Vocational, obviously, Nesho Vitek, Pathfinder, Essex, Shashin, I think that's five. Yeah, so the goal was to have some professional development sessions together. We had two of them out of Shashin Tech and collaborate on curriculum writing and those are the main things.
Was it beneficial?
Absolutely, yeah. In fact, the Bi-Literacy Pathways Program is something that came out of that. We all decided this would be something that fit with the goals of vocational schools to have something on paper that could show that a student has met some proficiency goals.
Yeah, it's awesome for them to have that credential, you know, for whatever level they reach. How is the speaking test administered? Do you administer it?
No, 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 I, the Apple Test is, it's offered by a large organization called the American Council for Teaching Foreign Languages. It's like the biggest organization in the country. Everybody defers to them, DESI defers to them. They kind of like help states write their curriculum, their frameworks, and their standards and stuff like that. And this test is designed and administered by that organization. There are raiders who are highly trained. I have nothing to do with the grading on the test.
Gotcha. So how are the students demonstrating their speaking ability? Is it like talking to a headset?
Yeah, it is, it is. And, you know, and therefore, you know, it's fair to say that it's somewhat artificial and...
But still, it's, they're not using AI to...
No, no, no. The program, it's all on a computer, the whole test is on a computer. And it's designed so that it can't let, you know, no other pop-up windows can come up or anything like that. It'll shut down and, you know, it'll alert the system, student was trying to use another window or some, you know. So yeah, the whole thing's on the computer, you can only have one window open, it's the test, like similar to MCAS, you know? And so, yeah, the raiders who listen to the samples they're produced are highly trained.
I think, I think maybe it could help. The prompts, they're prompted to respond to things.
Yes.
And that's how they're getting tested on the speaking.
Yeah, so they'll, they'll listen to a prompt like, and you know, they can be, they can be somewhat advanced, like, "Tell me about some community service projects in your, in your community, you know, in your neighborhood." And students will be expected to respond. Now, I, you know, that actually is an example of a question that was on the test, and, you know, I found it to be a little bit like, well, you know, maybe people are unaware of community service projects in their neighborhood. So it's not, you know, that's not a very good measure of their proficiency in Spanish if they're just unaware of project...
The content knowledge...
Yeah, yeah, their background knowledge might not be there, but...
The challenge of assessment.
A lot of the questions were good, there's some basic ones, "Tell me about the weather today." Describe, describe your neighborhood, what's it like? What do you wear to school every day? And students have very short time to respond, very little processing time.
So you've got to be...
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you for that.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, Eric.
Our next item on your agenda, we have a guest with us this evening. Tom is here from National Grid. We're doing some work here at the school that, it's a proposal, National Grid Grant Update Program for redoing the lighting inside of the school. And Tom, can you stand up and introduce yourself?
Thank you for inviting me. Board of Trustees, I'm Tom Gerber, National Grid. I'm a heat specialist at National Grid, working for five years, helping customers and clients throughout the state here upgrade their facilities and reduce their electricity costs by retrofitting lighting and changing the way that they use electricity in their municipal buildings, schools, and whatnot. We have a program through MasAid that allows us to bring in general contractors to spec out a replacement of lighting technology in your school, as well as other technology that can help reduce your energy costs substantially. And we will fund those projects substantially within the organization so that we can, you can actually take part in engineering those, implementing that technology for the energy savings that occur. We had a general contractor come in by the name of Cardinal Technologies. They're a well-known packs of arms called Project Expediter, X for short. They're general contractors that do lighting, heat pumps, all things lighted, and help us implement them, they participate in the program. The way the program works is they will spec the lighting that's necessary for this particular facility, replace the high wattage, low wattage technology, LED technology, and they'll install that for you, and we'll pay them for the projects. There is some out-of-pocket for the equity of schools, and we also have a program that allows us to help fund that particular portion using on-bill repayment. On-bill repayment is a function of having a certain amount on the bill for a certain period of time that you pay every month for that out-of-pocket expense. Right now, we're running a program that allows us to, whatever is proposed by the Project Expediter, with work to be done, we will pay up to 50% of that in incentive payments. That's basically a grant from National Grid, and the rest can be put on bill for a certain period of time. Ben and I worked on understanding what the payback and what the savings would be, and whether or not it would be cash neutral if we put the low wattage equipment in, whether or not your electricity bill will substantially reduce enough to cover the costs of the on-bill repayment, and we've made it cash neutral in this respect. So we have two proposals here, one for general lighting, replacement of all interior lighting within the campus here, and that has both on-bill and incentive portions or components to it. And then we also have a portion that will take advantage of controlling your fans and motors that help keep and cool your facility here, called the FDs, and that's another part of the program that's funded in the same way. 50% of the cost of the total implementation is covered by National Grid, and the rest is on-bill repayment. Any questions?
You, Ben?
I'm Beth, yes.
I'm Andy Lincoln over there.
Nice to meet you.
Emails. Ben, do you want to explain from the city side, you know, the agreement that we have? So at the end of the day, what the cost or the lack thereof for the school? Do I explain that?
Yeah, so I'm Ben Wall, for those who haven't met me, new Director of Climate Action and Project Administration. So the key thing is that the two projects that we're talking about are lighting projects and variable frequency drive projects. Of all the energy efficiency types of projects, these are the most predictable. In other words, it... In other words, what the utility says you're going to get in your payback is actually probably really, really close to true, except for the variable frequency drives, because I happen to know stuff about how things are controlled now. So our savings will actually be a lot larger than the utility predicts. So consider that a conservative estimate. What I, so the first half is that they're paying half of the cost, so 50% already. And this is a one-time deal that will end because essentially a lot of these types of incentives may start to be phased out by National Grid. So we're trying to get these before the end of the year. So that's the first part of it. Second part of it is that the on-bill repayment, I've structured it so that it's actually over a longer period of time. It's a 0% loan is what it is from National Grid. So I've structured it so it takes a longer period of time than your payback period, meaning that your cash flow positive in your first bill. But then we're sweetening it a little bit because we discovered some credits that are on other city bills that are for small bills that we're not able to use those credits. They're just kind of accumulating credits over time. So we're going to take those and we have a one-time opportunity to transfer those to other bills. So we're going to transfer some to the Smith Oak bill, some to a Forbes bill. Yeah, those are the two, those are the two projects. So what you will see, or whoever pays your bills will see on the bill is when we finally put that credit on, you'll see kind of a, probably a negative balance. But then you'll see an amount that if you simply request over, in the case of the lighting, three years, and in the case of the VFD, five years, if you request essentially the same energy operating funding that you always request, you're paying the utility in both cases. It's just you're paying them for the service rather than for the electricity. There's another savings that's in both of these that is not reflected in the estimate. Tell me if I'm wrong, but my impression was if this is an energy estimate, not a power estimate. And because Smith Oak has some very high power demands, you end up paying a fairly large amount in demand charges, which is the kind of, the highest 15 minutes in any month sets your price for the whole, for the whole month. So by taking all of this baseload, all this stuff that's kind of just always there and just dropping it, we drop our peak demand. Then we take our VFDs. When those, when all of those fan motors start up in the morning, right, and you're just like starting up the whole building, you do that, you turn on the lights, and then maybe you start running the kitchen. And boom, you've just set yourself your new, your peak demand for that month, which is high, and I think it's something like $9 per kilowatt, something like that. That adds up a lot. So before I had this job, I worked at the MS, and we actually analyzed the Smith Oak campus. And we saw that demand charges were a really big portion of the energy bill. And we kind of worked incrementally to figure out how could we drop it? And variable frequency drives were a big tool for ramping up fans kind of one at a time and getting them up to the right speed. And actually, they've been oversized, so we can kind of permanently turn them down to about 75%. And the fan laws, the fan affinity laws, basically say that your power, the change in speed, you actually get the cube of that proportionally in terms of a reduction in energy. So a cube reduction is very large. So you reduce your power in your speed by, let's say, 80%, you're now getting savings greater than 50% in, on those models. So all of that comes together to say that I think we're actually getting bigger savings than what we estimated to try to get all these projects. The key thing is to get the projects done before Christmas.
This is so awesome. Our energy bills are, I mean, they're so big. And to bring them down would be awesome. I had MasAid come to my house not too long ago. So when I read this report beforehand, I was like, that looks a lot like what was done for my house, but on a much bigger scale. Who, like, does someone count every single one of these lights?
Someone came in and actually did not.
In all seven buildings?
Looking at the technology that is in there now, those are T8s, 32 watts apiece, and they counted individual wattage usage and the hours of use and calculated all that for us. They're trained to do that so that they can apply accurately to certain capabilities and incentives. Promo program that Ben just mentioned, which is figuring out the total incentive costs, is a new program that we just launched in August to help us meet our goals that are responsible for Department of Energy Resources. We make commitments to them, MPP, that we're going to help our customers save so much. And we're a little behind the electrode side, so we've upped the program up to 30%.
So we'll help you meet your goal.
And we'll help National Grid meet its goal.
I don't know if you can answer this, but in the culinary art shop, their beautiful new lights, like their flat panels, are the, well, no.
We're not touching those. And similarly...
Will we see lights like that in...
That's a separate in-house project.
Gotcha.
So, yeah, there is that detail, which is, I think, in this room and the hallways. Tim Smith acquired partly through a National Grid program, I think, 70 or 100%? I can't remember. A lot, a lot of...
I think there were 110.
110, okay. Some number like that. He acquired a bunch of them. They're sitting there. His plan is to have students install them as part of the education. So those portions are carved off, we're not touching them. The incentive for the acquisition has already been done. So obviously, if Tim can get that done, then you can save it.
Right, and just to piggyback that, I wanted that to be clear. But also, this proposal isn't technically for all the buildings. So as one example, D building is not part of the proposal, and a few others. But long-term, it's not to Tim, we do envision gradually, whatever's not done through this project, our goal is to complete the campus.
So which buildings are part of this?
A, B, C.
It's A, B, and C. And if you think about what you have left, D, I think our general impression is let's not invest in D if we can possibly help it. And then you've got a bunch of new buildings that are going to be up to code, and then, you know, there won't be anything to do with it.
And why not D? Because anything we do with D is going to be sometime down the road.
We are, we are going to do D separately.
In-house, possibly with...
Okay.
So for next steps, all we need is a signature from Crystal or from you all to push this forward and start the work. What that does is it'll activate Project Expediter to schedule the work that's necessary for the equipment that's going to be done, and then consult with Tim and find the time to be out there. I believe that the work is going to be done after school hours. I hear it's quoted that way as well, so that there's no, your parents will see this and women are learning.
Could we get staff coverage during that time anyways? We're not paying overtime type of charges.
Yeah, that'll be coordinated, Tim and Ms. P.
I just want to thank Director Wild so much for, he's really been investing a lot of time trying to figure this out in the first grid. Thank you as well for this. I know it's been a process of them for a long time to figure out how to get you guys on a better path.
If you're studying it in Mass, how nice to see this come to fruition here now.
Well, this is a teeny tiny part of our stuff. Eventually, we've got a whole lot of other stuff to do, which includes, you know, thinking about, you know, I'll preview it. Like, if the plan is to get to zero carbon, we have to electrify, and we have to electrify at high efficiency. Those steam boilers over there are massively, massively optimized. And this plan that I developed, I shared with Tim, but I don't know who else he shared it with, is a progressive plan to kind of progressively electrify all the buildings, probably with a ground source or using the wastewater resource that's kind of going right by in that field there as heat exchange. And my impression in terms of how we planned it was that building D would be replaced and that that would be part of this overall. Just to preview what we're thinking about.
We're all know it.
So we have fun to start at the beginning, and I think people may even allow a criticism of us on this one.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we're going to, at this point, we moved it up the agenda. They have a motion to second to approve the proposed National Grid Grant Update Program.
So move.
Second. Dr. Martin.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Relatively short presentation this evening, just a few highlights. So at the summer advent retreat, we went through, sort of tried to line up the various school spotlights. And again, thank you to Aaron for batting leadoff and presenting this evening at the September meeting. And just to preview the following months for the board, you can expect adult ed in October, health assisting in November, math in December, cosmetology in January, athletics and co-op in February, phys ed in March, cabinet making in April, Skills USA in May, and finally, FFA in June. So those are the spotlights, and some changes. The management and operations, and I want to just get to you, Craig, the OP in the horticulture project. He is sitting in the arena gathering, and he's going to be prepared to talk under the committee's report, probably in-depth around the horticulture project. Just a couple from my level, high-level updates around the horticulture building. The excavation work has started finally. We had some issues around some unsuitable soil, which I'm sure Craig can go into more detail or direct. In essence, what happened was when construction began and they started excavating the site, we found a lot of unsuitable soil. There was some fly ash that was found, and we had a lot of discussions and debate, how do we mitigate that? Again, the challenge is if you have bad dirt and you try to build a very nice building on bad dirt, what's going to happen to that nice building in 20, 30, 40, 50 years? So that was sort of the discussion, how do we mitigate that? On top of the potential bad dirt, there was also objects in the bad dirt that we had to deal with well before most of our time, perhaps Mr. Thalia Stein was a former student. You know, there was a building at one point back there that in essence was buried, and we found a lot of the old objects that we had to deal with. So God's a lot of gray hair amongst a lot of us, but we finally got beyond that phase and concrete trucks will begin to arrive to subform the foundation hopefully this week. And finally, unfortunately, because of that delay, we are probably going to be talking about winter conditions and potential delay when it comes to June, July. So I don't want to spill all the beans, I'll, I'll credit sort of outline some of that. Anyways, we'll get there. We are seeing progress.
I want to jump in on that. Project completion delay. And I don't know for sure, but off the top of my head, this being a school project, I would hope there's wording in the documents about going beyond the scheduled substantial completion date. I know I ran up into this quite a number of times in my building career that you had to get the job done on date, okay? Regardless of these little things. Some of these little things in today's meeting, Mr. Tyler talked about additional days, and I know he's trying to protect his interest in that. And I'm thinking to myself going like, okay, I understand where you're coming from, but you still do have a goal to meet. And some of these incidental things, or some of these things I think are incidental in my mind, aren't a big deal and can be rolled into the regular schedule and mitigated by increased manpower, kind of just the overtime, ramping up how things get done. And maybe, Craig, you can touch on that or your...
Yeah, I know. Fair points. I think those topics were addressed. We had a meeting before the meeting today, and a lot of the topics were addressed, you know, what is already in the project and what sort of the salience of the delta, you know, the difference between the unsuitable step that'd be added onto the schedule. So, Craig, I'm sure you can talk about that. Moving on to the Campana Animal Building, some good news finally, after several years of discussion and vision and planning and design. This past Friday, we received a pass and grade on all the final inspections, which meant as of yesterday, we had access for our students who were going to get into the building, beginning moving in. And hopefully, before we know it, we'll have some teaching and learning regarding that particular building. Which brings me to the next topic. I know over the summer, at the last board meeting, we talked about a potential input house, sort of the ceremony to kick off that. I'd love to get some input from the board as far as preferences around some type of input house ceremony for the board, the community, just to showcase this in the world.
Definitely agree with that, and makes sense with what I'm saying.
Do you want to throw some out now?
I'd recommend during the school day. And I'd probably recommend Tuesdays. It seems like Tuesdays are... Is there a Tuesday during the school day that works for the board?
In which, September, October?
By looking at October. It'll be October 1st. We have October 8th.
October 8th is better.
I'd recommend, I guess there will be some marketing to get the word out.
You can do that for the...
Yeah.
And what time of day?
During the school day, like a little bit of time. I'd say probably after 9 o'clock.
Yeah, good for you.
10 o'clock. Your construction meeting's at 10 o'clock at two p.m. So I'd say before 10 or after 11?
Say after 1.
October what?
8.
11?
Yeah, 11.
Maybe an hour. I can't imagine a bus moving around. Yes, please.
And will we, have we identified, do we want to invite you to come in already, or we will do it? I'm thinking of the local events especially, not federals, but federals.
And I would invite the Gooducks squad, they help advise us on them.
And the political dignitaries, Mrs. Joe, and all this sort of people.
The folks who will potentially partner with us during time, co-op. Employ them, be so happy that we have the training, the folks to work with.
Another update from my level. I'd say, happy to say that D building sidewalk project that we completed, we received a lot of eyes and feedback, and we're looking forward to it around. So that was great in, in thinking city, and that was part of the capital improvement projects that we're funding, so thank you. Looking at this school year, and this is to, I want to thank Tim and his crew. There's been a lot of major projects on campus over the last several years. I mean, so many, a lot of things, a lot of update. Really, this year's focus is not necessarily new projects, but we really want to sort of hammer down and nail down unfinished projects. So we sort of have a punch list that we've developed, we're reviewing that at every leadership meeting. And our goal this year is really not new projects, but let's wrap them up so you can check them off the box. So that's really going to be the focus this year. I do want to welcome Caitlin Lucina. She is our new Superintendent and Minister of Assistant. Started last Monday, and as of yesterday, I believe it was, is our new Board of Trustee clerk. So Caitlin will be sitting at DESI in October.
Welcome.
And lastly, under management and operations, we had our Aino Fall Fire Drill. We had... We have a feedback from the fire department that will be working on to make sure things are safe and more efficient. Thank you to the fire department for that. Next slide, just some photos, and again, you'll see this during the open house, but that middle photo, I know it's very difficult to see here, the middle photo is the construction site for the horticulture building. Down back, kind of looking towards, up towards the football field. We're ready for concrete, okay, but not a whole lot to look at at this moment. And all the photos around the perimeter of this slide are all photos of the competing animal building. So in no particular order, just on the screen or on the slide, in front of you, the upper left-hand corner is sort of our back utility room, we have a washroom, dryer, so we can make sure all the towels are clean, that's where the restrooms are. The upper center photo is in the related classroom, it's sort of this hybrid use, mixed use, it will be, the related classroom is also gonna be the intake space, the retail space of as staff bring the dogs into the day, that'll be sort of the check-in, drop-off area. And then eventually, we'll have some display cases where we can sell some shampoos and leashes and whatnot that'll generate some revenue for the program. The upper right-hand corner, that is the kennel room, so obviously we're not set up yet, but that's where all the dog and cat kennels will be set up. The lower left-hand corner, I think this is one of the highlights of the project, this is the outdoor run area, so I wanna thank again, Tim and his crew, they built a beautiful retaining wall to bring this up to grade, and what you see there is some artificial turf, which is approved for dog use. So the idea is a dog can go out there, relieve some energy, relieve themselves, and then go back inside and get cleaned and then it can be calmed. So it's a beautiful area. The lower center photo is the grooming area, again, beautiful area, you see the large windows there, brings in a lot of natural light, those tables there are the grooming tables. And in the picture in the lower right-hand corner, it's sort of an extension of the grooming area, and that's the wash, you can see the wash bins there, where the dogs and cats, like the cats, but the dogs will be cleaned. So again, I wanna thank everybody who's been involved, students that were involved, plumbing and electrical, Tim and his crew, a few outside contractors, it really is a beautiful space. We had a lot of instructors from other shops walk through there and they were able to warm them up, and I really do think this is gonna be a draw when it comes to student recruitment, student choice, they see this, it's air-conditioned, okay, so you can imagine a lot of students might choose this particular program as well, so John wrote that.
It's absolutely beautiful. Who, I drove by earlier today, 'cause I wanted to see for myself after having seen the pictures in your report, who designed?
It was an architecture firm.
So then we hired an architect for some placement of that large, and then the training, retaining hall is absolutely gorgeous. Our horticulture students didn't do that as that was over the summer.
Correct.
And the outdoor area also so impressive, and because people are in the news a lot, and certainly when, as most of you've seen, the cameras that they just go around and around about artificial turds versus. So I'm curious, when you say it's approved, I'm thinking about animals' systems, there's smaller animals and some might get overwhelmed by toxins more, so just curious about the research process in choosing that and vetting it for the safety of the animals and our students.
The key, when it came to approval for the animals, was more of the waste, so when the dogs do the business, what's the drainage capability? So obviously, the solids like to clean up, but the urine will filter out a number of cars and shit out of it. So that was our biggest concern.
And the sulfur chemicals, better than it?
It comes from a specific company that mainly focuses towards, it's for pet animals, yeah.
We're not planning on putting this on a football field, actually. I'd like to, but...
It makes a lot of sense and that comes at a cost.
Family and community engagement.
Excuse me, of course, why don't you elaborate more about the design? We originally had a set of plans, and then Tim crossed paths with the eventual designer. How'd that all come together again?
Prior to the pandemic, we had a vision of the companion animal building in a different location.
And in different architect.
I believe it was a state name, T squared, I think.
No, wasn't Roy Brown originally involved in the initial concept?
Roy Brown has been used on other projects on campus, I think there was a connection with Roy Brown, but I forget how, honestly, how Tim got connected with the... But yes, Brown has been used, especially.
All right, what I'm remembering is somewhere along the line, some, Tim came in contact with this group, like when he had to say, they talked more, they'd done more, they had done similar facility and, and almost similar to how we shifted gear from our feasibility to study to how we ended up with SMA. So it was, it was a well-partened process.
Family and community engagement, we had our new student orientation on Friday the 23rd. We say new students, typically we'll see freshmen, but we do have some sophomores and juniors who come here for the first time, welcome for that event. I want to thank Mr. Bianca and his team, they did a great job in gymnasium that morning with various presentations, we got the students out on tours, and then hopefully informed the parents and family members of what to expect on the day one. That weekend was Covington Fair, that was staffed by the administrative team, again, a lot of great outreach. Unlike the three-county fair, which was the following week, a Labor Day weekend, the Covington Fair, we find, there's a great opportunity for us to reach out to current student body and family members, but also alumni, just getting a lot of alumni to come by and say hi, and graduate who's just graduated, and you know, they just remember this, which is great outreach to the community. As Dr. Spencer Robinson said, the three-county fair over Labor Day weekend, a great event, the farm was great, just, you know, the setup was honestly really well done, so I wanna thank all the students and staff that were involved in that. Last week, on September 12th, we had a back-to-school night. For those who are unfamiliar with back-to-school night, that's what most districts call it, open house. That's where family members can come in and meet the teachers, gives the teachers an opportunity to not get out, learning outcomes and goals for the year. A quick introduction, really not teacher-parent conferences, it's more just a quick intro, the families are able to follow the child's schedule that evening. And then earlier today, I had the opportunity, thank you Mr. Bianca and Mr. Shari for joining me, we hosted a dialogue and tour of Pathfinder, Quaylog and Qualet. So Pathfinder is a regional vocational school down in Powar, and they invite eight and nine different member districts, so typically eastern Haddon County, sort of into western Lister County, so their catchment area. And Quaylog and Qualet are two traditional regional school districts, sort of in that very periphery area, you know, so Lister County. And the challenge that they're having, keep this on the Cliff Notes version, there's an opportunity with some available space in one of the communities. As you can imagine, these small communities, student enrollment is going down, so space is not becoming available. And the challenge that they're giving to Pathfinder is we want more offerings, vocational offers, and the push is animal science to be introduced. So Pathfinder reached out and asked me some questions, I said, let's come on up and we'll do a tour of animal science and talk about the scope and the expansion of that particular program, and it was a wonderful opportunity, in my opinion, to have the chief superintendent come, and then thank you to John Melanie, we met in the conference room. Step one was to show them the amount of acreage that we have. So I pulled up Google Maps, I showed them not only the land that we have here, the pasture land, but we also talked about estate lands and all the acreage up there. But if they truly wanna have an animal science program, if you're gonna have cows and horses and goats and pigs and so on and so forth, it takes a lot of space, and that's something that I'm not quite sure they were really talking about. And then after that, we, we had a discussion around curriculum, and then we toured the facilities down back, and then the true scale of what a working farm entails, was important to them. We talked about some alternatives that DESI has allowed over the last several years, a lot of traditional regional work texts, they've created that assisting programs, and perhaps that's one area that they may want to pursue, and that seemed to be to the light. So we'll see what happens. But that is happening statewide, the competition is there, these communities are trying to find ways to maintain their students in the districts, because it costs a lot of money. So this is why, you've been pushing hard over the last several years to expand our animal science offerings, and this is case in point, and it just, I feel reaffirms the need for us to continue with the animal science and get the concentration that we need, i.e. the animal world, that was step one. Equine, you're gonna hear from me, moving forward, that we need to have a larger equine presence here, because as long as we're offering animal science the way animal science should be offered, it's end-of-regulations that students have a right to cover. Even when, if and when Pathfinder offers a vet assisting program, if a student in that district wants animal science, it can still work. I told that to the chief superintendent. So it's very, very important that we continue moving in direction.
And not just to address declining student enrollment, but to meet student interest and industry demands.
Yeah, and that's, it's interesting, Dr. Mr. Bianca asked us, and there is a clear difference between student interest and industry need.
Yeah, a mismatch.
There is a big mismatch, yeah, that, if you can look at the college level, you have a great example, Mr. Bianca initiated it earlier, but how many, how many college students graduate from college with a particular degree that you can't get a job? And that's unfortunate for that college degree. As a vocational school, our goal is to support the job market, and the job market in Western Mass makes it different than the job market in Eastern Mass. And it was unfortunate that schools are able to create programs for student interest that then doesn't meet the job market. And on top of that, it's unfortunate that the state may improve programs because they wanna say yes to students. Philosophically, I agree with you on that. But then when it comes to funding of the programs, i.e. Perkins and the Skills Cow for Grant, in order for us to justify the funds through Skills Cow for Grant and Perkins, we have to tie it back to our regional blueprint that Mass hired. So again, if we're trying to support a program that is not in need in that particular area, we're not gonna get the Skills Cow for Grant money to support that particular program. So why have a program that we can't sustain financially?
Are we getting any students from these three districts due to our...
So Pathfinder, again, is the vocational school, they have a lot of, a lot of community. But yes, we do have students. I'm not gonna mention another district, but it's a district that belongs to Pathfinder, and we have several students from that particular town, and I know that particular town is a strong support of some type of animal science offering. I think right now, we have seven students from that particular town for animal science. So seven students at twenty thousand dollars a year plus transportation, that's substantial for one particular town. That's the pressure that Pathfinder's got. Quaylog and Qualet's smaller, you know, the challenge for those two, you know, school districts, any child living in any of those towns, to get to Smith is a challenge compared to Qualet, so you'd be talking about a rush ride over an hour to come here. Those students, only other opportunity, if they don't, if they don't wanna come west to Smith, they have to go east to Norfolk or Essex or Bristol, and that's even a longer rush ride. It is a challenge for statewide when it comes to animal science. Professional culture, we talked about this over the summer, but the theme this year at the consulting, I shared a video of that with you, and again, it's how can we motivate our staff, how can we motivate our students to really wanna be engaged? So always keeping that in mind. And then sort of with that mindset, one of my goals, not necessarily a professional goal for evaluation, but just for my own well-being, I want to have an agreement, I talked to the administrative team over the summer, where I want the opportunity to shadow each of them. I've been an assistant principal, I've been a principal, I've never been a director of people's services, I've never been a facilities director, I've never been an IT director, and I just want the opportunity to shadow them, not evaluate, but just to learn what they do day in and day out. I feel I'll be a manager superintendent, I do myself, so that's one of my goals.
And saying that'd be a good example, it's great for teachers to shadow students as well.
Donations, this was a good month when it comes to donations. So I wanna thank Arco for donating a cutaway rear axle model to automotive. Fortune Electric donated an electric-powered pressure washer, along with some various accessories, put a pressure washer to animal science, to assisting the cleaning of the animal housing. RK Miles donated various tools, including a jigsaw, multi-tool, sliding compound miter saw, and stop stand for the saw, for carpentry, various products for the students. And lastly, John Zakowski donated some high-quality build-your-own frames in the art department, so that students create their art pieces, they can then build their own frame and have this. Thank you to all of the donations. So we kicked off the meeting, talking about this day in the... More than twenty-three years ago, we're talking two hundred years ago, the second bullet there, kinda hard to read, but I'll try to read it here. The fifteen gentlemen nominated as electors of president and vice president by Democratic caucus, held in Boston in June, June last, have agreed to serve, if elected, Oliver Smith Esquire, who was nominated for Franklin District. For those who may not know who Oliver Smith is, he was the founder of Central Michigan. A few moons ago, two hundred years. Looking ahead, so again, I'm with Craig every Tuesday morning, our weekly construction meetings.
Don't forget me.
And also Quajo, virtually, he's on the large screen. So we meet Tuesday mornings. There's various leadership meetings and faculty level meetings that we have throughout the month. Tomorrow morning, you'll see it on the agenda, tomorrow morning is our first general advisory meeting, seven o'clock in the cafeteria. Next week, I think it's next week, I have an MIA TMC meeting, that's the Children's Management Committee meeting, down in Franklin. Early October, we have our first Mass I workforce, workforce board meeting. Following week, I believe, we'll have a city department day meeting. That Monday is Indigenous Peoples' Day, will be the school, the campus itself will be closed, and then the following day on Tuesday, October fifteenth, we'll have a board meeting. With that, I'll turn it back to the chair.
This time, we've got three partners drop in.
Thank you very much. Good evening, good evening, everybody. Dom Sanchez, our student, current student rep could not be here, he participates in fall basketball, and they have scrimmages this evening, so we're hopeful he's gonna get there. One of our other reps, D.B. Perez, did move out of district, so we'll be looking for a replacement there. I wanna thank her for her service. Our enrollment this year, currently we're at five eighty-eight, you can see the numbers broke down by grade level. Just highlight the Northampton, that's the highest percentage since I've been here, one hundred and forty Northampton students from ninth through twelve, twenty, almost twenty-four percent. Ninth grade, if you look, we're almost at, we're at about twenty-seven percent, so pretty close to one-third of the students in the ninth grade are from Northampton, so that's forty out of one hundred and fifty, very high this year. I think that's what pushed up the overall numbers.
And that might be a record.
I'm not sure, it's definitely the highest since I've been here.
Yeah, I mean, I took the data back to nineteen seventy, and that's not the highest, it's right up there for sure, it's hovered right around eighteen, nineteen, twenty.
Yeah, eighteen, twenty. Very high. Yeah, it was surprising to me when I ran the numbers and saw it. New student orient, oh, sorry.
No, no, look at me with that look, so I said, that's surprising.
Because that means Northampton, middle school students are choosing Smithville instead of any other school.
Yeah, I was watching those numbers during, during the budget season, and I made the point of saying that this is the number, and I was correct to say, no, 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 they'll be going, no, 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 this is the number, looking at the applications that came in, so not so.
They were quite high.
This is also a national trend.
It is.
It is, it is. Yeah, and I think, you know, part of it obviously is backlash to several things that are happening nationally, so obviously the college crisis and the college loan crisis that's happening, I think just the parents, parents are always forward-looking, right? If you look at artificial intelligence, you look at outsourcing that's happened, you look at, you know, you're, you're gonna wanna have those conversations with your children to point in the jobs that are least likely to be impacted, so. So I do think that's, they're making educated decisions there around the future.
Does the middle school survey their students at all about why they made the choice they did?
I would have best of that, absolutely.
I was curious to see, you know, how the students...
New student orientation, Dr. Lincoln Hofer started to talk about that, that went very well. I wanna thank Emily Dum... I want to thank Emily Dumas, who's our department head of history, and also the National Honor Society advisor. We had 16 NHS students that came and participated in health food tours with students and parents. That was, that was great. It's always good because they start to take over the tours, and the students and parents have a lot of questions for them. And I thank Heather Booley, last year I gave her a challenge, we kept doing pizza and salad, and I said, I think you've got to take it up a notch on that day. So she brought up the walking tacos with the Doritos bags and the taco mix, and that was a huge, huge success.
Were they delicious?
They were good. It was good. It's Team Building Day that happened on Thursday, the 29th, that's our annual team building program that we developed in-house. That was led by Jackie Dugan and our assistant principal, Tony Saponas. One of the adjustments that we made this year is the, the two assistant principals, they are cycled with their students, right? So that means when the graduating class, so this, in this case, Tony Saponas, he came back and picked up the ninth grade, so now he has ninth and 11th. So next year, when the seniors graduate, Josh Clark will cycle back and pick up the ninth grade. So we're trying to insert them into that Team Building Day so that the ninth grade students see them and have that connection back. So they're helping plan it and do all that. Also want to thank Luis Bonilla and Nate Bergerad who assist with sort of the overall coordination of it during the day. Feedback from the students is overwhelmingly positive. I sent out a, after that, their sixth period class, after they're in it, we encouraged them to go on and do a survey that gets sent out, so that we get their, capture their feedback way away. And some of the English teachers actually have writing assignments based on it, and they were able to share some of their thoughts and insights with me. So Tony and Jackie will look at that information, and then they'll make some adjustments in the programming, you know, year over year. Back to school night, that was on September 12th. In addition to that, we did have Mr. Parks, the director of academics, Mike was doing a Title I presentation in the library. On top of that, we also had our extracurricular clubs out for display in the main hallway, the PTO was here. And this year we had Kylie Mercedes, who is here as part of Hilltown Community Healthcare, so she was here with a table providing information to parents. Our PLCs, just our professional development this year, we're going to be focused around PLC groups, and we're going to be kind of going back to things, some of the things we did pre-pandemic. And that was really around peer-to-peer investigation and instruction. So last year, we have Mike Parks who oversees the professional development committee with me. He puts out a survey, we survey all the staff, gets those results back, and we make a determination as to which had the highest interest, what areas and topics, and then we hire facilitators, teacher facilitators to run those groups, and they really become self-directed work groups. At the end, they're all expected to create a product or a presentation so that we can cross-load knowledge. This year, some of the feedback, and I want to thank Mike, his leadership, we're going to do slightly differently. We usually do like a gallery walk or a presentation. Gallery walk is where they're putting up artifacts or information about it, and they sort of walks around like you're at an art gallery, and then they have to explain it, or they do presentations at faculty meetings. But this year we're going to break it out, so one of the things that we saw was you really had the two facilitators who overwhelmingly became experts in that topic, and then they presented to everybody. So the goal is to have all 12 members or so of that group to sort of, almost like a jigsaw, they're going to break out, they all have to become kind of experts, and then they're all going to do their presentation within smaller groups. So they're going to cross-load information that way.
So you're using your PD time for the PLCs?
Correct.
Tapping in-house experts, teacher leaders to offer this, and teachers have, do they have choice for the PLC that they participate in?
Yep, yep. So either there's teacher leaders, or collectively they're going to create, make themselves experts.
Right.
So yes, the second half of that is that the staff were given a survey this year, and they ranked their top three choices, and then based on space and availability and their interest level, you know, so that we don't have one with 30 people and then one with four. So we'll cross-load based off those interests. And these are the topics we're doing this year, is artificial intelligence, really focusing on what does that look like in the classroom, what are the pros and cons, benefits or guardrails that can be put in place, maximizing technology in general, behavior management, communication with parents and students, supporting students with disabilities, interdisciplinary collaboration, and effective teaching strategies. So those are the topics that they'll be engaging to this year.
Such a great process for determining your PD.
Oh, it's a great process. It was actually Andy and I, probably 2010, in two different districts, where we went through the state PLC training, when Andy was at Monson and I was at Palmer. And it's a really great model. It's a really good model. Right now we have our club fair going on, so those are, we're allowing the extracurriculars to be in the cafeteria during lunches to try to answer any questions and get more student participation. Our college fair is coming up on October 11th. This year we're actually going to have about 40 colleges and representatives. We usually, last year I think I reported 228, 26 showed up, so big jump. We're going to be moving it out of the hallway and into the, into the gymnasium this year.
Why is it a big jump?
So Ms. Devine, our guidance department head, just working with some colleagues in other school districts, they were telling her about other ways that they sort of post for interest in different platforms that they use. So she attempted one of those, and it sure worked.
Got results.
Yeah, it sure worked. So a lot of, a lot of high interest. And then finally, the principal's youth advisory committee, so we'll be meeting again this year. Last year, students selected a healthy decisions project, and that was based off of our data from SPIFI, so at-risk behaviors. And they did information around cigarettes and vaping, healthy relationships, and alcohol. So this year, what they, at the end of last year, that group decided that they really wanted to do something around thankfulness or gratitude projects, so we'll see how that develops. Again, it's, we try to have it, let it be student-driven. So in addition to that youth advisory, I try to encourage them to do, the goal is one project, sort of campus-wide, culture-wise, each year, and then on top of that, they're advising on different decisions or different things, and they'll feed back from them. So it's a worthwhile group that I meet with. To try to increase, it's the, you know, that we meet during the school day, during lunch, the restaurant provides pizzas, so that can try to maximize participation. But again, I do have some, some spots to fill, but those are the students who are, who are part of it, as well as Dom, and whoever they are the rep for the trustees of the personnel, just some difficult news, but we are posting again for AgNet instructor. So we did lose instructor that we had. So that posting's gone out, we're trying to work our connections again. And then one thing I wanted to add though, is I just wanted to give, I forgot to put it in here, but the Italy group trip, just want to provide an update for all of you. We had 59 students, if you're going to do this, that are actively paying, committed to going, we have nine chaperones that'll be going, our cap is 60. We were at 52, and then we opened it up to freshman students, so we had seven, not seven freshmen, we had another senior sign up and about six freshmen, so pretty, pretty cool. We got one, one spot left.
And what are the dates for this jump?
That's April break, 25.
You said nine chaperones?
Nine chaperones. And it shouldn't impact the school unless due to the flights or some kind of shipping that has to happen. It could take a day or two before or a day or two after, but we flex that a little.
All four grades represented?
All four grades are represented, yes.
Interesting, that would be interesting.
Yeah.
All traveling together.
Yes. We're so big now that we don't have to double with anybody else.
Nice.
And they'll be traveling into like 30, 30 student-sized groups with five chaperones each. We think if we get to six, well, we know if we get to 61 more, it's a definite 10th chaperone. They fundraised already 900, over $900, so they'll continue to fundraise. Right now it'd be around $750 if they decided they had a chaperone, that's what the out-of-pocket cost would be. And they, I'm encouraging to look at that if we don't get to the 60, just to have that other chaperone.
Are the chaperones all staff?
Yes.
Or they parent all staff?
All staff.
Joe, on that college fair, what time of day would that be on?
That'll be in the afternoon, so it'll be about 12:30, well, 1 to 2, 12:30 to 2.
At 12:30 till the end of the day.
Yeah, so it'll be for juniors and seniors.
I have a question about vaping that I just want you to answer in the double, so not with, you know, real data. I know that the student vaping is on the, on the decline nationally, and I'm wondering, you know, when my student was here, everywhere, it was just, it was an epidemic, it was just bad, yeah. What, would you say that students here at Smithville are reflecting that national trend where there is a decline in vaping?
Yes, I do think that. I mean, we are, the amount of reporting this school year is minimal, and the students who report, they, you know, they don't want to be walking in places or see it. I will say though, I, I think that we are not being helped by industries who are increasingly making vaping products that are less and less detectable and are mimicking real-life items. So I think, I think there are, I mean, there's sweatshirts with the vaping capability in the hood. So I think, I think we're working against, there are people working against that trend, you know, to try to make highlighters that are really big pens and things like that that can make it harder to detect.
Right, and that's where the SPIFI raising awareness comes in, to say, you may be choosing to do this, look what it's doing to your body, look what it's doing to your brain, you know, make a better choice.
Yes.
So they're aware of them. Because there's also that perception, there's like a lag, the research hasn't caught up to the, to the use, you know, in terms of the harm that it does.
Yeah, and I think that, I've sent stuff out to parents, and we talked about students, I don't think that they realize that, you know, they look at a vape cartridge, and they look at it, and they, you know, it's like a bottle of water, bottle of water, or a cigarette, but they may have, they may be more potent, they may have a higher nicotine value, but it can still be the same size cartridge.
Right.
Or students are, you know, reporting that they use multiple cartridges in a day. It's like if you were smoking three packs a day, like it's, it's just the, the.
It's a substance use.
The scale, yeah, the scale, it doesn't mix in their, in their minds.
Yeah, and it's not just nicotine either.
No, the THC stuff and everything, yeah.
So hard to, hard to buy.
Yep, so I'll go on to the school improvement plan. There really are no change in the goal, so this is just kind of presenting where we're at to the board. The data has not, for NCAS, it's currently in the preliminary stages, right? So it's kind of, it's embargoed, it's not official. So you'll see I have in there not released in those categories. Some update though, is on the post-grad plans. You can see what's new to you is the numbers from 2023 and 24. So those are, that's new information that's been added into the plan that we now have.
Which category are we?
On post-grad.
Oh, all the way.
Yeah, I kind of skipped over those because they're not officially released.
Okay.
But I, we will present it when it's official in October. Mike and I, Mr. Parks and I have already begun looking at the data that's in there. Surprising data, it just, I think it underscores the algorithm that the state uses doesn't quite make sense, and how they restructure goals year, you know, year to year based off of last year's, and how, you know, you may be scoring exactly the same, but you don't, you get zero points because you didn't improve enough. So it is an interesting system, and I think it does skew results.
Zero-sum game.
So you can see our, you know, the numbers between 23, 24. It really, it really underscores the, the idea that the percentages are really based off of the students that are running. There's no real, you know, real easy trend to say, when you see in 2022, when half of them went to two and four-year colleges. And then in 23, we're down to 24%, last year 35%. And this is student intentions as they report on their way out graduating where they, where they intend to be. And you can see employment is generally around 50%, a little bit higher. Military was higher last year. The good news is that, you know, we did get answers from everybody on what they intended over the last two years, so that was a positive.
This first, I know, trade school, two and four-year college?
Yes.
When you say trade school, so they're going on to higher-level trade school?
Yes, and that would be their, their intention is to do that full-time.
Can you give me the sample?
Sure, Ohio Tech, Lincoln Tech, so they might be going on for welding.
Yeah, 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 more specialty, more proficiency, okay.
Yep. And generally that's when they're reporting that they're going full-time, not part-time. We ask them to do, to report kind of what they're mostly doing, so, you know, there may be students who are, say they're intending to go to employment full-time, but they might have taken a business class and they're continuing yet. The next is the curriculum and instruction. So that first goal, we did do work last year on the 11th to 12th grade crosswalk, and that's, that's another area that we'll continue to finalize this school year. Investigating the hybrid OSHA, we've continued on with our, our OSHA 10. I'm not sure that this will stay as a goal, to be honest with the board, with the school council. It's kind of one of those things that we keep coming back to and thinking about, but one of the things that we've been doing now is really looking at the OSHA 10 as safety training. So we're really trying to look at doing the safety training that makes most sense for that career field. So, you know, in plumbing and electrical, they're doing OSHA 30, they're not really going to be affected by any kind of OSHA 10. They're already doing the hybrid OSHA 30 with an instructor and with exams. When we look at culinary or some of these other programs, they're doing specialized safety, you know, and they might be doing it as well as OSHA. And as the students are becoming more and more tech-savvy, it's, it's not as much of a heavy, of a heavy lift. There are some students that we're having to, you know, unlock. The benefit of having the OSHA 10 on the computer is that they have, they're going at their own pace, it's their own work, they're being judged independently. The negatives are that it's not as exciting, it's not as interesting, you're not getting those sort of real-life stories that you might get from a teacher or the organic conversations that happen. But again, the pros and cons, you know, cons of having somebody in front of you is, a lot of times we're not getting that individual understanding, we're not, we're not really assessing whether the student themselves understands the regulations and understands that only in practice. So that's why we kept coming back to sort of that hybrid, but again, I'm not sure if it's going to stay as a priority with the school council or with the vocational programs, but it might. So investigating the development of an entrepreneurship seminar series, one of the things that we are looking to do this year, and it, so you can see last year we talked about it, but this year we are going to have a human resources panel, so we have a series of contacts, parents and others that have contacted. So we are going to set that up through guidance to talk to students about, prior to the juniors going through their mock interviews, just talk about, well, what is a hiring, what a hiring profession is actually looking for? What do they want out of that? So that, that's going to get put into place this year.
I have a question about the crosswalk activity.
Yes.
So that's where, what's described here is where English teachers will compare what's taught in 11th grade to what's taught in 12th grade, and make sure that there's, there are no gaps and no redundancy. Is that correct?
No, this is crosswalking the entire, all subjects, so.
Academic and vocational?
So just, just academic. So it's ninth through 12, creating a document, we've done it through ninth through 10th and already disseminated it. And it resulted in departments being able to visually see when they're teaching stuff so they can be getting a line. So like an example of that is when English and history sort of changed some of the topics they were talking about, so that it would be benefited synergy with the books that English is reading. So we're going to do the same thing with 11th and 12th. Another thing that came out of that was, because we do disseminate it for the vocational shops, there's been some shops that have shifted some of the topics that they teach, maybe about math or other things, so that kind of coincides. It also helps when you start changing language, you know, so that when they're talking about fractions or different things, you're using similar language and math from ways, so the students see the connections.
And it saves you when you're teaching also.
Yes.
Yeah, because you're like, oh, you already know this, you learned this in math, like you go right to analyzing this bar graph or these charts, my charts or whatever, and so forth, studies.
Right.
Because you're, I don't have to teach you how to do that, you're remembered.
Right. And it's. Right, and it, and it's, it's really, the goal is to have just it there so that they can begin to, you know, independently or as a department, look at those and start making, making better decisions about when they're teaching these. So just sharing info.
That's awesome.
Yeah. On assessment, again, the results weren't released, so I don't have any update there. The shop information handouts, we did not have any action there, but that's, that will still be, that's still a priority because we've had parents ask about it. Again, I think it's, it's underscored even more when we have a higher amount of students coming in whose parents went the college route and don't understand vocational ed and they want to know how to support their, their child and like kind of, well, what are the real next steps? What's licensure? Where do they go from there? Because they just don't have that personal frame of reference. So that, that'll still be a priority. The program of studies, that handbook's been updated and we have new templates, we're going to be working on the templates that we got out of NEAS feedback around making sure that all the shop curriculum templates are all the same. So that'll continue to get worked on. As, as far as guest speakers, we do have a guest speaker that comes, but we're still looking, and I was working with the youth advisory around that, to try to come up with ideas of what would resonate with them. So I'll continue that conversation with this, this group this year.
The survey that they did, maybe after the team building, that could help.
It might, yeah, yeah. And then identifying common themes and messaging, you know, the next, we do have the vision of graduates, so the next step would be around, I'm forming an implementation committee to look at policies, protocols, practices and other areas of my opportunity to make sure that people are just asking themselves, how is this fitting in to that vision? And then we'll, we're going to talk about ways to have that messaging go out around campus in student-friendly language and that people can understand.
I know my criminal justice trip, we're, has contacted my son, who requires a Superior Court judge to take care of this.
Yes.
They're trying to set that up for next month. And my other son-in-law is, is involved with the, the energy business, I quote, the National Grid gentleman, who said that they're excited to work with us not only on this project, but to work with us for our departments, that anyway, any students, they're looking for help like everybody else. And if they catch them on the lower level, to groom them to come up, it's an advancement for the person as well as the school, so that's exciting as well. The other thing I wanted to mention is that the day the freshman came in, you know, I happened to be there and I happened to hear a, a great conversation from a parent that had a student that was coming as a freshman, but also had one that had been here for a couple of years. And their comment was pretty exciting that they were excited that teenagers don't talk to their parents. They said it's different at school. The kids come home from school when they're in their, whether it's academic or their vocational week, and they want to tell their parents everything they learned that day. And it's so exciting. And he said, because parents don't get that information normally, not saying against regular school, but they, they just get jacked up about working with tools, working with people, working on a car, working whatever. But I thought it was very interesting feedback from a parent to say they're getting that at home, so thanks to your teachers and, and they're, they're really doing their job and the parents are talking.
I got one.
Yes.
For instance, this last page here, 2023 update, it got written with, so these items that were incorporated in 2023, you still carry those forward?
Yes.
Okay.
The goal, the goal is to carry them forward.
Okay, so, so some of these other pages, no action, but the intent is whatever you develop, you're going to try to carry forward unless you determine it's not working.
Yes.
You were mentioning how the OSHA thing may be, right?
Yes.
More comment? Ben, I applaud you for sticking around, but you don't really need to.
I've got to get this signed, man.
Okay.
Can't, can't get the project going.
And I, I was surprised Tom was still sticking around.
You get to learn a different side of Smithville.
Yeah.
Committee report.
Yes. First is a policy subcommittee report. Well, the policy subcommittee did not formally meet, but I was briefed on the proposed updates to our Title IX policy to align with the new regulation from U.S. Department of Education, which took effect August 1st. Title IX bars sex discrimination in federally funded schools and colleges. The new rule expands Title IX beyond sex-based harassment to many additional aspects of sex discrimination, such as disparate treatment based on sex in all aspects of K-12, like grading, educational opportunities, discipline, athletics and more. It also requires school districts to actively monitor programs and activities for sex discrimination, identify barriers to reporting and address them. As a result, we might be seeing more Title IX cases than were used to. All schools are required to have a process for students and staff to submit a Title IX complaint and a procedure for how the school investigates and resolves it. Under the new regulation, school districts must designate a Title IX coordinator, investigator and decision-maker, which can be three separate people or one person filling all three roles. The people in those positions are responsible for steering the complaints through the investigation process. The Title IX coordinator is also responsible for ensuring all students, staff and parents understand their rights under Title IX and how they can submit Title IX complaints. Ultimately, the new regulation should make things easier for districts, especially small ones like ours, because it simple by stepping requirements and allows districts to handle a broader swath of conduct complaints under the same grievance process. So you, you'll see that on our agenda under the new business section, so that's a little context for that. And I'd like to also report on the data and strategic planning work that after Lincoln Hooker and I did when we met in August. We identified next steps coming out of the board retreat in July and then visited the MSBA website to understand the process for projects getting into that pipeline. We learned that the MSBA is required to conduct periodic school surveys to understand the conditions of public schools in Massachusetts. Three surveys have been completed so far in 2005, 2010 and 2016. The survey data is one of the tools that the MSBA uses when assessing applications and funding. They're working towards completing the next survey with the report scheduled for release in December 2025. So that is happening right now. So the three categories, the MSBA survey evaluates our building condition, so they assess seven site and 18 building systems. The second one is general environment, which encompasses learning environment, building safety, accessibility, academic and program sufficiency and instructional technology. And then the third category is capacity utilization, where they determine average under or over utilization and of course vocational and vocational schools have their own benchmarks in terms of capacity, right? So you'll see all these categories reflected in our district improvement plan. Our fourth goal from the retreat was the physical, sorry. Dr. Lincoln Hooker has also obtained the engineers and architects reports on rebuilding, which the board can utilize as part of the campus-wide feasibility study that we identified as strategic priority for the tree. And we also plan to review student enrollment trends as well as the Bureau of Labor Statistics data as our next.
So correct me if I'm wrong in what you just said, we're currently in the pipeline for review?
No, we just wanted to see what the pipeline looked like.
You mentioned 2025.
So they do a survey of, the, the MSBA is what comes.
Yeah, yeah.
So they do survey of all the schools in common. And the last time they did it was in 2016.
Yeah.
And so there was a big lag, right? And so they're about to do another one, so they're, we're going to be one of the schools that is, that is, that is a survey.
And so they're, they're tasked to do all the schools?
Yeah, because they, they then report on this is the condition of our, of our school buildings in the great state of Massachusetts. And they use that date, so it's two, both of those things, right, to say, here's a picture, it's, I can show you some.
Yeah, yeah, and we're going to need to talk.
Here's a picture of schools in Massachusetts.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And then if your school is in the pipeline or funded from the MSBA, they're going to look at their own data as one of the determining factors of your eligibility to receive the funding.
So if this is all happening, coming up, and we're being pretty proactive, starting to move forward, hopefully the stars will align and.
It's pretty, it's pretty, it's broad brush strokes, their survey is, it's not.
Yeah, I got to imagine if they kind of do all the schools.
Yes, yeah.
But now, all right, that's great data, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. And the physical, the, the architecture reports.
That from 2016?
No, from 2019, right?
2019.
Yeah, all right, anyways.
Yeah, so those are great resources for us.
Thank you.
Thank you. Greg, I'd like to hear from you. Sorry to take your wait.
Not at all. Well, good evening. As Dr. Lincoln Hooker had mentioned, the project has seen some unexpected conditions over the last three, the four weeks. I'll give you a little more detail what that means. So on July 23rd, as the contractor was basically bringing the site down to its design elevation, that's stripping down material, they started to uncover what was thought to be organic material. The concern with contractor was it might be oil or other contaminants, so we had to bring our environment, your environmental consultant back in to investigate that further. The information that was gathered was that was not oil or VOC, but was simply fly ash from previous usages on the property. And fly ash is a pretty common, you know, huge pollutant, but contaminant that is found in soils and has to be managed on-site. So once you find it, it's very difficult to work with it unless you have a place to store it or you pay to have it removed. So in those cases, it was very expensive. So what we started to do was look at the properties of the material. Could the material still be used structurally or was it just unusable and we had to abandon any use of that soil? Through OTO, who's the environmental and the geotech, a report was created, that material was evaluated and through some steps that the engineer had directed us to do, we were able to take that material, amend it, remove the material, add additional material and make that soil structurally sound to be used again.
Yes.
Lot, lot of material, lot of information, but.
Greg, I just jumped in a second.
Sure.
Just fly ash is used in concrete now.
What is the fly?
It's just a term, it's a term of a burnt product, basically.
Boundaries.
Yeah, okay, here's, here's a bit snapshot. Fly ash is a by-product coal-fired power plants that we can use in concrete to improve its performance and sustainability. And then the, doing this whole thing about concrete is very carbon-heavy to produce, cement, blah, 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 they're looking at all these additives, slags, fly ash, and trying to come up with this premium mix and, and make it. And now there's a facility starting to develop in Poyo, the green concrete plant. I don't know any details, know very little about it, but this whole industry is, is being targeted. So fly ash can be used in concrete. And basically, it's, it's stuff that was burnt on-site somewhere that was dumped there through the air.
In some cases, it's foundry, actually metal work, and you did metal work back in the day in the back portion of the, of the building, so it's possible it's part of that old foundry. But so in discovering that, it stopped the site work, it brought engineering into the mix and it took about three weeks for a final testing and amended plan to be created. During that time, nothing was happening for the foundation work or the slab work, which was all critical path, meaning that it was scheduled to start in October and it was planned on being done in November. We have currently about a 37-day delay in our schedule.
We can't afford that.
We can't afford that and we have to find ways of decreasing that. So we started with a meeting with contractor this morning. He started at 44 days, we got down to 37 days to start first meeting. We've installed camera on e-building. Keep an eye on things and it's a time-lapse camera, so we can look back and see what work's done, when it's done and how long it took.
Do they know they're being recorded?
Oh, yes.
Okay, good.
They watched us install it and they asked a bunch of questions, so it's, yeah, everyone's aware. It's not capturing any student activity, it is directed purely out of sight. So by doing that, we will now monitor their progress. We're saying that 37 days, we understand, they believe it's 37 days, and we will continue to fight and take back each and every one of those days as we move forward. But for the current time, the schedule shows a turnover to the school certificate of occupancy on July 18th, 2025. So it is into the school year, which is not what we intended on doing. We wanted to turn this over in May, allowing time for our students and faculty to get going and get the space up to, you know, to its running condition. So currently, we, we have to try to find that meeting between paying extra staff, pushing the contract, bringing in extra staff and trying to improve the schedule through monitoring them as well as giving them opportunities to make up. So weekend work, an extra two hours in the evening, add a, a piece of equipment, anything that can be done will be on and we will continue to track. But for the moment, we have to accept that there is potential of a delay and what that number will be six months from now is different than what it will be today.
Is it the biggest issue that we have to spend the funds by June 30th?
We do, but we have a variety of funds. We have insurance funds, we have donation funds, we have grant funds.
And they don't have the same July, June 30th?
Correct, so we spend the grant monies first with those deadlines and then the insurance money, the donation money is used to kind of pick up at the last two months of the project.
So then the other big issue that we're identifying in this delay is that, that the students, the faculty won't be able to get into the building before the end of the school year? Is that what you said?
Yes. Current, it will crunch our schedule in mid-July to the first day of school, that time is now very tight.
To do the whole transition?
Make sure we're ready to deal with it.
And then the spaces that they leave, get those ready for whatever. Thank you.
Pretty difficult, yeah.
Hindsight, of course, but would it have made sense to do like ground, you know, soil testing or bore testing?
It was all done.
And it just wasn't sound?
So rewind a year, back when you still had a beautiful hill with grass and trees and a field and fence line and all of that, bringing a drill rig up onto that hillside and creating problems for the trees was a challenge. So we only could get so far up onto that hillside and unfortunately, that hillside is where everything lies. I've got a 1940s Ford Hukkab, I've got a 1930s Coke bottle, I've got a Soul of a Shield.
Thousands of bottles.
Thousands of bottles, clone bottles, anything you could possibly think of. Somewhere along the line, someone decided that it was a good place to put some stuff.
We should put our resident historian on that question of why all those bottles?
They did do soil investigation, unfortunately, like Greg just explained, we missed it.
You could have 10,000 square feet, you could decide to do Swiss cheese with your geotech and you could miss the one pocket that could cost you money. We did a number of geotech pourings, we went back and did more, we went back and did environmental, so it seems like the areas in which the material was present was areas we could not get access to at the time. So hindsight, we'd have cut the trees down and we would have done the, the geotecs on the entire site. But most schools do not like to take down trees, you know, if it can help it.
Especially if they have to back this thing. I really would.
So some exciting news, so we are back on, of course, now we're, we're starting, so Wednesday and Thursday they're pouring foundation. So Wednesday and Thursday, they're pouring foundations. They'll be starting underground plumbing work in the next two weeks. Slab work is right now scheduled for December. That's a very bad time for pouring concrete. We're doing everything we can to get that back into November. But there are also winter conditions, as Dr. Lincoln Hooker mentioned, that we'll have to take into account that would protect slab during that work. So it's not that we couldn't do the work, it would just cost more money. So we are not back on schedule, we're back in progress and we're moving forward. For the last three weeks, we have been doing a lot of treading water. So we're very happy that we're on again, and Kyter is, seems to be pushing very hard, so we will continue to push them even harder.
You've managed a lot of projects. How, on how, just a rough percentage of them, do you bring a camera, put a camera?
It's a standard operating procedure now. It wasn't five years ago, it is now.
And is that because of...
It's just insurances are requiring it.
Everybody's got to be more well.
Yes.
Something blows off the site, breaks a window, no one, I have no idea, you go back to the camera, it's there.
Hopefully, it's there. Every project, I mean, substance, if you mass has a camera on a building nearby, focus down, and I think most of them are live. So this is time lapse?
It's a time lapse, so at the end of this, we'll be able to give you an entire building project in 15 minutes.
Also, will we be able to access it currently? Is it active yet?
It is.
Okay, so...
So I think Andy has been given an invitation, I will have Gary, if you would like one break, I can send it to you. And you can watch it at any point, but it's entertaining.
And the people, like Kyter isn't offended or insulted or feels disrespected?
He was at first.
He was curious why the camera was going up. And we simply said that because this contract doesn't allow us to be on-site full-time, we needed to be able to monitor while we weren't here. And we wanted to do some marketing afterwards, which is their goal. He's not offended anymore, he was concerned that we might have been watching him. I think the word he used was big brother.
Big brother, yeah.
But in that sense, we've given him access to the camera, so they can see it just as much as we can and benefit from it.
He'll become a colleague.
I'm just going to, let me just add on to that. Scott and I have had our fair share of conversations through all of this, and I have to respect that a lot. Just want to take it to the topic, it's not a lot at all. Bigger concerns as far as the soil, whether you're talking about grievance, that was my initial concern too. Craig came to me to ask about camera, I'm thinking, how is this going to work from my level?
Contractors will sometimes want them up themselves for their own purposes as well, so. But I think for that purpose, it'll give you a nice marketing film at the end that you can use for phase two. And it'll also give us an opportunity to just be there when we're not there.
It would be a really cool teaching tool, yeah, also here at this vocational school.
You could share it, lead classes, yes, absolutely. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Well, thank you all for your support. Debbie, thank you so much for all your help, you've been great. We'll miss you.
Unfortunately, I'm not going to be here this evening yet. I was able to get to do it. He sent a text, I can read it here from now on. So on the Canadian, we already talked about, we did get the occupancy permit, students have moved things in. The only thing that we have to touch on to finish up the project, we'll see on the backside where the outdoor run is, there's some steps, there's a railing, we have the temporary railing up there to pass final inspection, we have a permanent railing to go up. And in addition to that, the snow stops have to be finished, so otherwise, we just drop down there. The apple storage roof has been completed, which is great, it's also waiting for the snow stops. Northern Tree, we've been contracting with Northern Tree, some of the pine trees out in front by Route 9, they have to come down, I think there's three of them. So things we're working with Northern Tree, has also been working with DPW agrees that these trees have to come down. Unfortunately, from our perspective, these trees are not in the city's tree belt, so of course, the costs on this. Anyways, we'll take the third goes. Eventually, there's also some pines between the seed building and the hospital, which we have to attend to as well.
And our report culture?
We would not want the liability of cutting trees down.
Because it's too big of a...
Yeah.
And your financial report is in, in your report. So let's go to new business. May I have a motion, the second, to approve the facility use rate updates? They're in your package. Further discussion?
Yeah, what should we know about this?
So really, you'll see some language change, mostly just job titles updating that. On the third page of the document, you'll see just updating the cafeteria staff rate, the IT staff rate, and then on the last page, the field prep rates. So we get our practice is, these are rates that we charge the outside groups, if they have to use any of these services, we want to make sure that the rate covers the actual cost of our potential staff coverage, particularly the venue. So we look at the highest potential rate of any of our custodians as an example. So if the highest paid custodian happens to be on duty, it has to be paid at that rate, we want to make sure that that cost is covered. So it's simply updating our rates to make sure that our services are...
Who generated these new rates?
Simply looking at current payroll, what our rates are for our current staff, just to make sure that it's current.
So was it that you...
Crystal.
So we have a motion, the second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We have a motion, may I have a motion, the second, to approve the updated Title IX policy?
So move. Second.
Further discussion?
Just a comment that the practice is that we're moving away from the word grievance and we're using the word resolution. Just a language twist. And that's MASC.
Do we need Title IX resolution procedures?
Further discussion? All in favor?
Is that what we...
Our attorney would not recommend that.
Can you say a little?
The grievance procedure is separate from the informal resolution process. So I think...
What our counsel thought is...
I know, but he's also advising, I don't mean to throw Justin under the bus, but he's also, he told us not to adopt the MASC policies that they've put out because there are some issues with that. So I don't know. That was just because I had the bulldozers, giving them to Andy, and then when Justin had advised differently, so.
Interesting. Well, it's going to change after November.
And we've got faith in our counsel.
Yeah, no question.
Yeah, I think Justin is, Justin especially in that firm, is specialized in Title IX. You know, I think it's so new to everyone, I guess we could amend it, you know, we have to, but...
But it doesn't change the procedure, it's just the...
The language, yeah, yeah.
It's just a terminology, so we can keep it as, it's not...
Turn it back, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. The proposed national grid, we already did. The next one is, may I have a motion, the second, to approve the to add Chapter 70 funds increase of $8,806 to the public relations line?
So move.
A little explanation, please? Okay. Yeah, okay, thank you.
So Smith vocational, I guess we're fortunate enough to receive some more money from Chapter 70, a block of $8,600. And so this money is coming to the school. This was obviously, during the budget process, we have to now allocate this money into our budget. My recommendation to the board is we allocate it to public relations. So they can step further back, I think, to answer your question sort of partly. As we, Chapter 70 money is the state money that comes through Northampton to us to support the Northampton students. So this is separate from the non-resident tuition money that we get from the non-protected students.
And why did you choose PR?
That one particular line that we cut, if you recall, back in springtime, we were short in our budget, and we had a close that gap, that was one particular line that we did cut. But again, unfortunately, you know, we have to have a PR line, and a lot of my counterparts always tell me, tease me that they wish they could have a PR budget line, and I always say, I wish I didn't have to have a PR budget line. So it's just one of those expenses that we have to have. I'd hate to cut back too much to have an impact on our applications.
Okay?
The next, may I have a motion, the second?
We didn't go.
Okay. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
This one is, may I have a motion, the second, to approve the payment of $1,594.25 to an employee incorrectly paid by FY 2024?
Second.
How was this discovered?
So this was a relatively new hire, and this individual, long story short, has a bachelor's degree. During the time of hire, there was not a request and not a giving of his staff versus transcripts to verify that he had a bachelor's degree. So he inadvertently was put in a column of a non-bachelor's degree educator. Every year, and returning...